Okay. It's 10 o'clock and we are moving into our public hearing agenda. We have no regular public hearings or quasi judicial public hearings, so we will move into ordinances and resolutions. So first, we will have citizens' comments on one, two, three different second rea-- yeah, they're all second readings. If anybody would like to comment on ZA 0314, 0414, or 0614, please come to the podium. Citizens' comments. Okay, seeing none, we will move into ZA 03-14.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. The ordinance of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Pontagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 10 Parking and Loading, Section 10.3 Parking Specifications, by deleting subsection J in its entirety, adding a new section 10.13 Bicycle Parking Specifications, to provide for bicycle, uh, excuse me, to provide for required bicycle parking facilities, amending Article 7 Architectural Provisions, Section 7.4 Building Principles, subsection E Highway Commercial Building Principles, subsection 14 Design Treatments, by adding an option to integrate appropriately designed short-term bicycle parking as a design treatment, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? We've been over this several times. Any changes?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve ZA 03-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I have a question.
Sure.
When a motion is made to approve an ordinance, is it appropriate, do we, shouldn't we identify the name of the ordinance when we do that? Or is it, is it okay that we don't do that?
Well, I think because it's in the segment of the agenda that's specifically addressing that ordinance, I believe it would be--
So we don't have to call out specifically the ordinance that we're making a motion to approve?
No, because no other ordinance has been brought up for--
Just clarification, that's fine. Thank you.
I haven't seen the city clerk throw anything at me yet, so I guess I don't know what they're about. Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have ZA 04-14.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Land Development Regulations, Pontagorda Code, by amending Article 3 Regulating Districts, Pontagorda Code, adding mobile food dispensing vehicles as a new use permitted by special exception with conditions on developed property in Section 3.8F NC Neighborhood Center District, Section 3.10F HC Highway Commercial District, Section 3.11F SP Special Purpose District, and Section 3.17 MO Medical Overlay District. Amending Chapter 26, Article 3, Sections 3.8F, 3.11F, and 3.17F Pontagorda Code to require special exceptions to be subject to applicable provisions of Chapter 26, Article 4, uses permitted with conditions, Pontagorda Code, amending Chapter 26, Article 4, uses permitted with conditions, Pontagorda Code, adding a new section 4.40, conditions for mobile food dispensing vehicles, to regulate mobile food dispensing vehicles, providing definitions, authorizing mobile food dispensing vehicles to operate within certain zoning districts within the City of Pontagorda, Florida by special exception approval, requiring a local business tax receipt for each mobile food dispensing vehicle, providing requirements for the issuance of mobile food dispensing vehicle business tax receipts, providing operating standards for mobile food dispensing vehicles, providing a prohibition, providing for enforcement, providing for the revocation of mobile food dispensing vehicle local business tax receipts, amending Chapter 26, Article 8, Section 8.12 Sales Within Public Rights of Way, Pontagorda Code, to include other public places and parks, amending Chapter 26, Article 8, Pontagorda Code, by adding a new section 8.29 Outdoor Sales prohibited, to prohibit all outdoor sales on private property not otherwise authorized by Chapter 26 Pontagorda Code, providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Yes. Yes, Tom.
I know that this is prohibiting the sale of alcohol, but I'm wondering if, did you ever look into what the state mandates are with regard to selling alcohol on--
Mobile vending?
No. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Move approval, sorry. I need more questions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ZA 04-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I think this has been around since I've been here, four years plus. Finally have something.
Maybe we'll actually have one.
Maybe we might.
Still waiting, still waiting for the petty caps.
Okay, now we're moving to ZA 06-14.
This is the second reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. The ordinance of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Pontagorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, Article 11 Signs Standards, Section 11.3 Permitted Signs, adding subsection 11.3S Medical Campus Directory Signs, to provide for adequate signage for medical campus properties, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval of ZA 0614. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve ZA 06-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. So are there any items? I would like to pull the performance objectives, so that would be C1.
That's what I was going to ask to pull as well.
Okay. Any other items to pull?
Move approval of the remaining consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda minus C1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, just looking over these, one proposed addition I would have under city clerk--
Citizen comments first.
Oh, sorry. Back up. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items. Thank you. Consent agenda item, citizens' comments. Okay, now we're moving on to C1. An addition, I thought, under city clerk. I like the ideas of the digital equipment recording, and I also like the email for the local business tax receipt. And I think after we've come back from our conference, that a suggestion would be for the city clerk's office to partner with IT to look at all technology improvements that could relate to efficiencies of your operation. So the wording that I came up with is partner with IT to assess technology improvements to streamline operations, which include both of those items that you already have on there.
And I will tell you that I have already met with Brad Shud, our new IT manager, and we have begun those discussions.
Great, good. So is everybody okay to include that?
Absolutely. Yeah, I am. The reason why I wanted to pull this was as I reviewed this, and I've mentioned this to Howard, and I looked over at the whole list, I really felt like the list of objectives felt like a to-do list. It felt, I felt it lacked creativity and innovation, and I just felt that it didn't have an element of challenge of, and I think what you just said is one example. I was thinking of another example from IT that would be examine mobile technology and develop a plan for how we would implement mobile technology to connect with our community. I mean, there are other, other examples that could be interwoven throughout this entire document. I talked with Howard about the workshops in the city manager bullet three, the budget workshops, and I asked about, well, what is the budget workshop? And he said, that's when we bring it to you at council meeting. And I said, well, you know, maybe we really need to have a real workshop and that's separate from a council meeting and invite the public to participate so we can really examine some of the things that, you know, we're going to have a tough year, so we need to really kind of be thinking differently about things. You know, another one, how is the money? Yeah, a question I guess I have is how is the money that we're investing in each department going to improve our city's performance, delivery of service, and connecting with our community? So it's things to think about, how are we stretching to do things differently? And it could be, we talked about the city, is it pathways, hallways? The hallways document?
Mm-hmm.
That's published quarterly?
No, not twice.
Twice a year. And, you know, maybe there are things that we're doing today. We want to do something, but we are not able to do it because we don't have staff or the time to do it. Well, maybe there are things we need to not do so that we can do some of these new things, you know, and be innovative. So it's, and it's, you know, we can get into this, how do we do more with less discussion, but how do we do things differently? As we move into 20, and approach the 2016 budget planning year, we're really going to be challenged to think differently.
Maybe perhaps if we could capture it under one, what you're suggesting, and I believe that our staff do that all the time anyway.
I'm sure that they do, but I don't see it in here.
But maybe under our city manager, we could incorporate something about explore innovative ways to reduce workload or something like that.
And they have done that because they've participated in Lean Six Sigma and those type of things, and they've come up with projects in the past. I don't, is that still ongoing or?
Actually, it is. The departments quietly do that themselves, and we have a member of our IT staff who goes to a, I guess it was an operational efficiency committee that meets with other cities, and Alicia Oates, she goes to that. But let me give a suggestion. Under, under information technology, one of the objectives should be for that division to update the strategic plan. We have an IT strategic plan. So the idea is to update the strategic plan. I mean, a lot of these are particular action--
Specific, yes.
--that they're going to undertake, but to update the strategic plan to-- I'm trying to come up with the words on what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's to update their strategic plan--
To include all departments of the city?
Well--
Well--
It's to--
Incorporate emerging technologies?
With an emphasis on, yeah, with an emphasis on integrating emergent, emergen--
Emerging technologies.
--emerging technologies into operations.
Yes.
That would be perfect.
Yes.
That would be perfect.
Kim?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think that's probably the biggest thing that needs, needs some direct focus, but what, what I see with this is that, you know, just being up here for a couple of years is that all the department heads, all year long, are bringing things to us because they're going to their conferences and they're coming back and they're having new ideas and, and they're doing it. So this is really a living, breathing situation that may not just be on this list. These are things that have to be done, but all of the things, it's not the only things they do. If you really look at it, they do so much more than what's on this list because as things come up through the years, it's ever-changing and they bring to us these new ideas and stuff, so this is just things that have to be done.
So is there consensus to include those two, two things? Okay.
There's a third. There's a third.
Yes, I have, I guess, two, two items. Under city manager, I'd like to incorporate, since it's nowhere listed here, continue efforts to secure funding for our RO plant through state, through the state legislature and SwifMud. I mean, that's something we will be doing, but I think that should be, again, a targeted focus. And then under our police department, I would also like to suggest that we enhance diversity in the workforce when opportunity arises. I still think that, I know that they're doing some things, but I would like to, for us to kind of focus on that, both it's under fire, I'd like it also under police.
And I think they are focusing.
And that should be really citywide.
Right.
Shouldn't just be for public safety.
Citywide.
We do do it citywide. However, I've asked the fire chief to step it up.
Okay.
So we can add, police, police again are doing much better in certain areas, based on the nature of the police business, I guess. But yes, we do look at that citywide.
Tom?
An item that I see that is not listed under performance objective, but is in the city strategic plan, and we've discussed this before, one of the items that's in the division is to establish Pontagorda as a cultural hub of Charlotte County. I don't see a strategy for that in the land. I'd like to have us think a little bit more about that and come up with a way to make that, to put some tools to make that an objective, whether it's a workshop, as was mentioned before, but I think we need to do that, at least I would like this year to do that.
Okay, who?
Where, where does it fit, right?
Where do you want that?
Someplace.
Well, it's in our--
It's in the strategic plan.
It's in the strategic plan. I thought that was supposed to be the Arts and Humanities Council taking the lead on it. You want us to take the lead now?
Well, I thought we were going to have a workshop with all of the arts groups. Wasn't that going to come forward or something to council?
We, we did mention that, yeah, but I don't, I don't see a, a plan in order to make that happen.
Maybe you could meet with the Arts and, Arts Council, the Arts and Humanities, Howard, and find out what's going on now that they don't have a director anymore.
Maybe give us an update, maybe find out what their needs are.
I know.
I just don't think we can have something in the strategic plan year after year and have nothing come, come out of it.
I mean, I think it's grown tremendously over the years that I've been here, but it's, it's always citizen--
And I think when we discussed it before, we do do things, but we're maybe not documenting, like we supported the grant that the RPC was doing for the cultural map. We have partnered with them, staff did research and worked with them on that. We support the Visual Arts Center.
And all of that is great, but what is the objective? What, if we say we want to have Pontagorda as a cultural hub, how do we make that happen? We need a plan.
Well, first of all, we as a staff, I'm not sure we have the capability to produce the plan you're talking about.
Okay.
How would we do that?
Right.
Well, it starts with a conversation of workshop with--
A workshop? Do you want to have a workshop with?
I think it should start, maybe the two of you should meet with Arts and Humanities Council and then bring an, an agenda item forward, and then we could discuss it from there.
Okay, we can do that.
I agree.
I think it's, it's something that needs to be nurtured before we would put it into the specific objectives.
And I think it has to have some type of focus before we just--
Well, remember, Don came to us to get money for a, a plan, so, I mean, there's something going on out there.
And he went to the TDC and they, they--
Gave money.
Yes, so, I mean--
So there's something going on, we just need to find out what it is.
Get a status report.
We could tie it into this whole idea of creativity and innovation, and this could be one of the things, you know, as an example, that it's not really, we're, we're not at the point of developing it, but it's exploring it and, and coming up with suggestions.
So let's, is that, is that, you're going to have a meeting and then bring forward an, an agenda item in the future so we can--
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, let's see where they're at.
Okay.
I mean, we've met with the maestro, we've met with different people. I mean, they are doing something out there. Let's find out what's going on.
Find out what their issues are, what they need to grow--
Right.
And then have a general conversation about it, sure, we can--
What we can do to help.
And it might devolve after your conversation, perhaps we should have an open workshop then with all of the arts groups.
Well, let's get the background first.
I guess that would be good.
Yes.
Let's get back to one item before we approve this. Do we want to have a separate workshop where we invite the community in to comment on the budget?
I mean, I think we do that. We, we do it so often.
I mean, we have budget meeting after budget meeting after budget meeting. I just--
Our whole council meetings are budget meetings.
Yes.
Do we, or do we rush through them?
I don't feel we rush through them at all.
If you analyze--
Hours.
I have another adjective that I'd rather not say.
No more budget workshops.
I tried.
You did, you tried. Okay, so--
We'll go slower.
Painfully slow, we will.
Well, it's, I mean, if it's, if the citizens want it, I mean, I think they should contact us and tell us they want it.
They do, and some of them do. They contact us and they give us their input and we take that into consideration.
Invite citizens to let us know and we can--
Yes.
--make a decision.
And, and we shouldn't tailor our, our meetings around a handful of people that, we all know who they are, that persist, and so, you know, we go about our business and we're very inviting and we're always open, so, and we meet, we've met with groups individually. We've been invited and we go and we talk and we have conversations, so--
And we have discussed the budget almost at every council meeting, so, and everyone is invited.
And we, we, we really do take our time because we, we do the yes, no, maybe for months and months until we really make a decision on what we're actually going to implement. So there's plenty of time for people to give input, I feel, so--
Here comes Sharon, she'd love that.
Okay, so no on the workshop?
I have all the additions.
Okay, so with those additions, we need--
I'd like to move approval with the additions.
Second?
We have a motion, a second to approve the performance objectives with the additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I lost my place, let me get back here. Okay, we're in regular agenda, and the first item is citizens' comments on the regular agenda items, which would be the poll banners, marketing and sale of city property, purchase of a hand-cranked bike, discussion regarding used grease containers, minor code amendment relating to window signs, and clarification of service station definitions. So come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm referring to, my name's Ron MuShang. I've been a property owner of Pontagorda since 1986 and a full-time resident since 1996, and I want to address item Roman numeral eight B, new business, the purchase of a hand-cranked bicycle for Team Pontagorda. For the record, I'm a member of the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Council. We are a organization that was founded in 1999, and our sole purpose is to educate the public and units of government on their responsibilities and obligations under this act. Members who are involved in that group and who are kept abreast of our bi-monthly meetings are both chambers of commerce, and John is in the audience here to confirm that. We have the units of government from both the City of Pontagorda and the Charlotte County. We work very closely with the city, primarily with the building department. We are called upon regularly to review plans whenever there's an access issue on new business commercial construction, and we have a good working relationship with them. As you're aware, Team Pontagorda established a free bicycle program several years ago. This past March marked three years that our organization approached them and brought to their attention that they did not have any bicycles that had, that were accessible to persons with mobility impairments. From my understanding, there's about 40 bicycles in operation at this time. Now, for three and a half years, we've been working with the team and trying to get something, and the common factor was they wasn't available because of the cost. In all due respect, Team Pontagorda has done very little in the last three and a half years. I was surprised to hear Mr. Cummings come this morning with a, a project that they apparently were doing because the ADA Advisory Board was never made aware of that. However, I would like, and I would challenge a member of Team Pontagorda and possibly someone from the city council to approach a veteran who lost both of his legs in the jungles of Vietnam, or possibly most recently in the Middle East, and tell them they cannot participate in this program because it's too costly. The city takes great pride in promoting this program. As recently as last week, Mayor Keising was on Comcast Radio, Television promoting it. Councilwoman Pravky was on a television program called Florida Tripping, and on the weekly updates in the city newsletter, city manager Koenig praised the program in about three weeks ago or so. This past July, the city council had a proclamation and presented it to me as a representative from the ADA Advisory Group, designating July 26th as Disability Awareness Day in Pontagorda, and I was proud to receive that on behalf of the council. In closing, I'd like to say that the Americans with Disabilities Act is a civil rights law. It was signed by the first President Bush in 1990, on July the 26th. It does not require or expect any special consideration for persons with disabilities. It merely asks for equal. In 1964, President Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act for the same purpose, however, that was based primarily to persons of color. I think we can all agree that the majority of us will agree that in 1964, that was the right thing to do. I'm appealing to this council for you to do the right thing today and approve the purchase of the, at least one hand crank so that all persons can enjoy that program, including persons with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And as part of the committee, if, when we discuss the agenda item, if we need you to come back, are you available to answer questions? Okay, thank you. Okay. Other citizens' comments on regular agenda items? We have nothing under budget. Unfinished business, poll banners and street banners on US 41.
Good morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. Back on August 20th, discussion came up about banners on 41. So staff has contacted DOT and pulled up the regulations, and we're back to report to you what the actual regulations are rather than just a blanket no. We did find out that poll banners and street banners are fully authorized. They have an actual application form for them, so the, the mere statement that they're not allowed is not correct, but the regulations that govern them make them very hard to find a place to put them in Pontagorda. The first regulation is that you cannot install any new poles to install banners. So you can't go out and put two poles up in which to hang a banner across the road. You can't go out and install one pole to hang a, a banner over the sidewalk. So we have to find existing poles that would work for us, or if we wanted to really get creative, we could come up with a new downtown lighting plan, install high-mass lighting of some sorts with pole, with banners already in mind when we do that. That's very expensive and doesn't really fit with our community real well, in my opinion. The, the big problem for a pole, for a, a street banner is two poles, one across from the other, over the road, that would give us 18 feet of clearance. If we look anywhere in the downtown area, that's right about where the power lines are. So it's not going to be very conducive to a, a banner across the street. Poll banners, which would hang out from the light pole or something, have to clear the sidewalk by nine feet and be two feet back in from the curb. Again, with our 12-foot-tall light poles, we're, we're not going to be able to meet that requirement. For the bottom of the banner, it would be down in, in the area where pedestrians are walking. So that's what I have to report. If you'd like us to do anything further, check anything, I will be glad to take your direction.
Tom?
Can we put this on the YOMO? It's relative, I have a couple of questions relative to it, and we could all take a look at one of them. We, Helen and I completed their field trip to Mount Dora over the summer, and this is the type of banner that they have. Now, the banner doesn't appear to be, what'd you say, Mark, how many feet above--
Nine feet above the sidewalk.
Doesn't appear to be nine feet above, and nor does it appear to be two feet back from the curb, and I'm wondering, would they, could they get a special exception? I mean, I, they have these banners all over the, the city, and they, they looked very impressive. They were very nicely done.
My first question, is this an FDOT roadway?
I don't know the answer to that.
That would be the criteria.
That's, that's been the catch.
That's the criteria, okay.
Could we have them on Marion and Olympia?
It's a FDOT roadway.
FDOT road.
Right.
We could put them on Sullivan, we could put them on Taylor, maybe.
Marion and Olympia west of US 41 southbound. In the residential area, it would be allowable if we had places to put them--
I think we're talking the commercial area.
Right. And, and we were in WaChula recently, I didn't look it up to show you a photo, but they have higher mass lighting, and they are, they are quite a bit above. and they are, they are quite a bit above, and they are offset off of the sidewalk. So, you do see them around in different cities, but they're under different scenarios than what we have. So, I don't know what other, any...
Doesn't seem like we have any options, at least with the FDOT roads.
Right.
We, we get away with putting the flags up and they don't... They don't wanna get in trouble for telling the city to take the American flag down, probably, so they...
No, we just put 'em up.
Yeah, we just do that, and we get away with it. So, thank you for your investigation.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we know why no means no.
Unless you can get special disposition from the NPO and when they go up, I mean, I don't...
We could ask.
We can ask.
You know, there have been requests from, I think, the downtown merchants to try to make Taylor more of a focal point, so it may be in the future, we decide as things progress, to use the north, the Taylor or Sullivan and those streets, potentially.
They're very attractive.
They are very attractive.
Um, we have Mr. Harrington here, from, our director for the NPO. Maybe we should... Bob, maybe you would have any insight as to whether or not this might even be reasonable?
Can you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
For the record, Bob Harrington, director of the NPO, um, it's not, it's not impossible to request it because there are, they do make, uh, variations of signage and different, uh, regulations along the state and federal highways. Um, I know that they're very strict about what goes on their roadways, but it doesn't mean we can't ask. And, uh, it's something that we will all initiate. As soon as I get back to the office, I'll shoot, uh, a question off to our liaison about, is there a possibility that we could get a variance on this, and then I'll get back to you. And I'm, I'm sure, just to put Howard on notice, they're gonna ask for a letter from the city, I'm sure. So, it's, but I'll start the ball, I'll start the ball rolling, so, anyway, I'll do what I can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have purcha-, uh, marketing and sale of city property. Oh, we could, wanna do the bicycle now? Okay. We're going to, if everybody's okay, we're gonna, um, discuss the purchase of the hand-cranked bicycle for Team Punta Gorda Bicycle Owner Program. Are you...
Again, we have a request. Um, we went out and, um, got some quotes. The lowest quote came in around seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the dollars can come on council contingency, and, um, that would be the... Not to exceed amount, because as donations come in, we could reimburse ourselves with the donations.
What, where, has any discussion been where this would be located? Cause aren't there six or seven locations now for the bicycles? So, what, what would be the most appropriate location?
In my view, it would be Lashley Marina. It needs, this bicycle needs to be protected. Uh, not that they all don't need to be protected, but I think this one, um, is a more expensive bicycle. The, the question I would have for, um, Mr. Mu Shang is, is what else would be required? Would there be anything else required? Uh, would there be a DABIT required? Would there be anything else required to be a part of this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the...
Is there anything else it, that would be required to, um, uh, as a part of having a, a hand-cranked bicycle?
No, this, uh, my name's Ron Mu Shang, again, for the record. Uh, this has been discussed and beaten to death at, at our meetings and, and with the representatives from Team Punta Gorda. Uh, I don't want anyone to get the misconception, uh, when you provide something for a person with disability, we're not requiring you to provide any type of assistance. You don't need medical staff on board or anything else. So, if you have a bicycle, it's my responsibility to use that bicycle. My suggestion, uh, would be, and I agree with you, uh, Councilwoman Pravky, in regards to the possible theft of it, uh, but my suggestion would be at the, um, the health center up on, uh, across from the hospital. You have a rehab unit there. As a matter of fact, I talked to a young man who works there. He's a, uh, a young man, probably in his thirties, paraplegic as a result of a car accident, and when I told him what the, uh, what we're trying to do, he, he was, uh, very impressed. He would like to take advantage of it. It just thought, I thought that would be a great place to put it, based on, uh, the clientele that get there.
I know that we have, um, Team Punta Gorda's looked at various locations and had conversation with the wellness center, and they don't feel that they could put it there, cause they don't have a place to store it covered, and it couldn't be protected. So, that's, that's the, the problem.
I guess I'm curious where it need to be protected. I don't, uh...
Well, the, the issue is, um, these bicycles are left out in the elements. They, then they start to rust, and the chains rust, and, and it's, it's a problem with the maintenance of the, the bicycle. And, um, in locations where the bicycles have been left out in the open, it costs a lot to then start replacing parts. So, the, where the bicycles are protected, they last a lot longer. It's easier to maintain them, and they stay in better condition, and people want to use them. And so, I think in this particular case, it, we really need to make sure that it's, yeah.
And that makes sense, but I, I, I guess I understa-, I, I misunderstood. Aren't some of the bicycles already out in the open? Stored in the open?
Um, most of them in some way are covered.
Okay.
Uh, or, they provide some kind of cover for them, uh, whether it's a tarp or whatever, but, um, most of them do.
If the council could understand that this, this particular type of bicycle, a hand-cranked bicycle, is basically a three-wheeler. It's, uh, it just has a extended chain, and you use the hands rather than the pedals. But, other than that, it's, it has nothing special from, uh, from the regular bicycle, with the exception of a longer chain, a bigger chain. But where they stored, it would really be, uh, we would have no objection to anywhere. But I agree with you, it needs to be protected.
Thank you, and of course, um, all the other locations would know that it's available wherever it is to let, um, the customers know, you know, what the inventory is, cause we have a, we have a trike over at Lashley, right?
Yeah, all the marinas have tricycles.
Okay.
And, um, which is, is what has been used for people that have a, a disability like myself with a balance issue. You know, I ride a tricycle because of that, um, but the hand-cranked is the part that I think we've been, have been missing. And it's been very difficult, quite honestly, sadly. So, uh, as much as, I know I've written articles about it in the newspaper, whatever, trying to get people to donate, and it's, people haven't, so I think it's great that we can step up. And, uh, the one thing that we don't have here is that there is an annual maintenance fee that, to the program, uh, for this. Uh, I'm not sure what that is at this time, but, um, I would say whatever that is needs to be included in part of the cost of providing that bicycle.
Um, I, we would probably need to know, I mean, eventually.
I think it was like sixty dollars a bicycle. It's not a lot, but it's...
That's significant.
I mean, it's not...
And if it's ongoing, we need to know.
That is significant.
We don't pay the on-, we don't pay the...
Well, this, the city does not pay the ongoing maintenance fee for any of the bicycles that have been donated because the host locations pay those.
That's right.
So, I guess we would need to find out then, would the Lashley Marina be willing to pay the ongoing maintenance?
Well, Lashley Marina is us.
Okay.
Well, maybe what we could do, so, if, if we're in favor of buying the bicycle, we could use the donation portion to apply to the maintenance fee.
Sure.
We could do that.
But then you, you have to rely on continuing donations. We only, I think, Adam mentioned it was about a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy dollars that was collected so far.
Well, that's three years. If it's sixty, I don't, I don't know what it is. We would still have to know. I mean, we could still move forward with purchasing the bicycle and then, at this time, use the donations and toward the maintenance and then try to...
I, I guess I have a, maybe I just add on to that. Um, we also know that Team is going for a grant. Is that correct?
I've heard that, that they are, um, seeking a grant. They don't have any answer yet.
Okay. I guess what I would like to suggest is that we do approve this from council contingency, and that, uh, if a grant does come through, that we buy a second one, and perhaps have one both at, uh, Lashley and then also at the, uh, at the rehab center.
Well, I, um... As I stated before, the wellness center is already, Team Punta Gorda already talked with the hospital.
And are you telling me they don't want one?
And they do not, they don't feel like they can accommodate it there. That's what I was told.
Well, plus two, if Team gets the grant, then it's on their, you know, it's on them to go ahead and invest in the program the way they see fit. So, I would like to, I would like to at least approve the purchase of this and then get more information about the maintenance, because then we're, we're... You know, maybe the maintenance for this type of bike may be different than the regular cruiser bike that they're used to maintaining. So, we really need to go into this with all the information, but we certainly can approve the purchase. And we had a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion. In a second.
Okay, so we have a motion of second to purchase the bike and find out more about the ongoing maintenance that would be required. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, now we're going back to marketing and sale of city property.
The city has, um, a mix of residential and commercial-oriented properties that we own, that we think, um, could be marketed, um, for sale. Um, the easy, the, the ones that, um, are resident, in the residential areas, the small lots in the Tribune Woods neighborhood, um, along East Helen, East Virginia, East Charlotte, Showalter. We think those, um... Oh, and West Virginia. We think those could, um, be really applicable for turning it over to, uh, let's say, Charlotte County, working with them regarding building, uh, housing, which they have a ship program that they administer for us and for the county, or even Habitat, and, uh, building some nice homes on those properties. We think that could be, uh, really applicable. I'm not talking about West Virginia. Showalter, Charlotte, East Virginia, and East Helen. Um, they could be really applicable for some nice, affordable housing. They've put up some really nice houses. So, be thinking of that. There's a property on Nesbit that, uh, we've been trying to sell, and we're still trying to sell. That's the former recycling center property. Uh, you know, we had that Phase One environmental, and we have chosen not to do a Phase Two. We're still hoping somebody might be interested in that. There's the property on Taylor, outside the city, uh, that we, at one time, we're gonna use for a land swap. But that's still available. And then there's the former Public Works utility site, uh, the large, anywhere from fifteen to twenty acres. That is right there at Shreve and Virginia and West Henry. Now, six acres of that, we have contemplated setting aside for a new library once the county secures, once the county secures funds for that, either through the sales tax or their capital projects fund, whatever. So, the rest of the site, though, is, uh, applicable for development. So, if we could frame the discussion, can we first talk about the residential units? The residential properties in, um, the Tribune Woods neighborhood. Is that something that you may want us to pursue with Charlotte County or not?
So, would we just donate it to them, or how does the transaction work out, or do we...
Staff's recommendation is that we donate it to either Charlotte County or to develop ship housing or even work with Habitat somehow to get houses built. They do a great job.
They do. Tom?
We, each of us, uh, were interviewed by a company called PMG Associates recently, and they are the, uh, company the city uses to ensure that, uh, the city is complying with HUD requirements. And out of that conversation, I was, we, we, I was advised that one, one of the needs of the area that they encountered was, um, a need for, for housing in, in that area, for reasonably priced housing in, in that area. So, I would be willing to support the donation of those three pieces of property.
Well, there are actually four, I believe.
Four.
I think we were talking three, four, four, yeah.
I like the idea.
Absolutely. I think it's great. I do, too.
I mean, maybe we need some background information, the ship as opposed to working directly with Habitat. What, what are the differences there?
Uh, David Hilson, Urban Design Manager. Uh, the ship program is a, a state-sponsored program using tax, uh, tax dollars coming back to the city, uh, for, um, development of affordable housing. Habitat operates on its own. They have collaboration with the ship program, uh, in the past, and they've also worked with, uh, uh, the Housing Authority as well, so, um, the ship program is a state-sponsored program.
Who builds the homes for ship?
Goes out for competitive bid to private contractors.
And then they do something similar, like what Habitat does, is give the people a low-interest mortgage?
Yes.
Okay.
See, when we say work with Charlotte County, Charlotte County kind of, they run the program for us as well.
Right, right.
Okay.
Um, so that's why it'd be clean if we give, if we work with Charlotte County with these four properties, let them...
Have we done any before with them?
Uh, Mr. Hebert is, is very interested. He's expressed interest in every one of our lots. Uh, we've done a land swap with the program, uh, previously to build the two that are currently on Fitzhugh.
Fitzhugh, very nice houses.
Now, do we get the taxes for those houses? If we give the property to Charlotte County, are they Punta, are they Punta Gorda property?
Yes.
Yeah, they're standardized.
I just want to make sure. Yes. I think Steve Fabian wants to talk on behalf of housing.
Steve Fabian, a member of the Charlotte, uh, Public, Phew, Punta Gorda Housing Authority. Uh, the ones on Fitzhugh that you're talking about, those units were built by ship, but they are rental units, and they are being managed by the Housing Authority.
Yep, very nice houses.
Yeah, they're very nice, but that, that, those are rental units. Now, Habitat, when they build a house, they're, it, the owner is, they're ownership, so there's a difference there.
So, is the Housing Authority into the rental business, or...
Yeah, we, we are managing those buildings for the county. Uh, we have set up a separate corporation to do that.
It's via their Section Eight program, which is a housing voucher program.
Yeah. Again, we work with the county to manage that.
That's right.
Yes.
I guess the question I have then is, what is the need when they talk about affordable housing? Is it for the rental of affordable housing, or is it for the purchase of affordable?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yes.
In your deed to the county, would you want to have some sort of reversionary provision that says that if the house wasn't built within five years, the property, um, returns to the city?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, cause otherwise it may stay vacant for, forever again.
And if we turn these over to ship, to the county for their ship program, do they decide whether it's a sale or a rental? Do we just wash our hands of it? Do we have any input? I mean, based on what, you know, we're doing this for our comp plan, we would like to have some kind of input if we, if we...
I think if you wanted to put those types of conditions on it, you could. Uh, I believe it's just based on need, uh, what the county has found is what the need is. And at this point, it's a mix.
Mr. Fabian, I have another question.
Mr. Fabian was my father.
Former mayor Fabian, how about that? Are the rental units popular? Are they in use? Are they continuing?
Oh, they're in use, yes.
Waiting list.
We have, and we get a management fee for managing, and, uh, as a matter of fact, when they built them, they didn't put enough concrete in for the parking, and so the housing is through our corporation. We actually extended that, that parking, but we are managing them, and they're, they're renting. They're both rented.
They have a waiting list.
Oh, they do? Okay, thank you.
So, it, it, may I ask a question? Which would you say, we should offer these up for rental? Have houses?
I, I think, I, I think with Howard, then, turn it over to the county and let ship decide whether they want, what they wanna build there, whether they wanna get Habitat involved in it, I think.
We work, I mean...
Yeah. Because I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think the property on Fitzhugh that we're talking about was city property.
It's, we swapped.
And they, and they did a swap on that, yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we turn the four pieces of property over to... I'd like to make a motion that we turn the four pieces of property over to Charlotte County to, to either, for rental purposes or to, uh, build in, at the show.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to turn over the four properties that we discussed to the ship program, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, so now we need to talk about...
Well, um, let's start at the top, of the recycling center, again, it's still out for marketing, um, we do our best, uh, we have a agent working on that.
I, I mean, I just have a comment, because my husband and I were the potential purchaser of that property, and we've since moved on and bought something else, and the owner of, the previous owner of the property that we purchased did, did the environmental study. So, I think, you know, I know the city doesn't like to do that, but unless you know what you really have, you're putting the onus on the buyer to spend money for something they may not even end up purchasing. So, it could be a roadblock, I'm just throwing it out there. Carolyn?
With that in mind, um, I don't know whether anyone else would be interested, but the Peace River Wildlife Center is looking to build a hospital. And I guess what I was thinking is that we might want to donate that property, because again, to do an environmental study, we don't know what we're going to find. And if we find something, we're going to have to do something about it.
Right.
And so, if we donate it to somebody, they're going to have to do something about it as well?
I, well, not just to build a, to build a hospital on top of it.
Oh, yes, they would. Whoever gets it is going to have to remediate it per whatever is there.
What was there before?
Well, we don't know what's there, that's the point, there may not be.
We have an idea, there's something there.
What was there before?
It was a recycling center, and our sanitation trucks were there.
Okay. Just trucks?
Big sanitation trucks.
Well, sanitation trucks, and you know, who, it, it...
Was there gas, petroleum?
There is, right close by, I don't...
There is, close by, there's Gator Petroleum right there.
But that's not us.
Doesn't mean that it couldn't have creeped...
It's a sticky situation.
Yeah, but if it's coming from them, then it doesn't, that doesn't matter.
What about all these brownfields and these programs they talk about all the time? Can't we...
We don't have to remediate their property.
Can't we do something, get some funding to... I mean, they're talking about this all the time, the county's constantly talking about brownfields. Isn't that what they're talking about? That situation?
Well, we designated the West Henry Street property, the former Public Works Utilities, as a, uh, kind of a brownfield area, but it had nothing to do with environmental issues, has to do with grants. Has nothing to do with what's underneath the property, we just happen to do that for the benefit of enterprise, uh, grant funds, if somebody wanted to purchase that and develop jobs. Uh, we can ask, we can ask the county, if, if this, is there a grant possibility for an environmental study?
Yes.
Why don't we donate that to the county?
But if we do the environmental study, it comes back with nothing, great. But if it comes back with something, we are responsible.
But aren't there funds for that also? Where'd Jerry go?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, isn't that...
Where'd Jerry go? He was out here. Yes, there are.
Would you like to come up, Mr. Harrington, if you know anything?
Yeah, there are funds to...
Again, Bob Harrington from the NPO, yes, there are funds available. Um, at, in my previous life, and with another NPO, we did apply for and received a million-dollar grant for cleanup and assessments of various brownfield properties. And, uh, so there are funds available out there, and I know the Regional Planning Council was looking at the possibility of getting one of those grants, and they're also looking for projects, so, it may be something you want to, um, follow up with, with the Regional Planning Council. We, as an NPO, applied for one, but it technically isn't really under our purview, being a transportation, and I kind of had to separate it from my regular duties, but, uh, again, there are funding, there are funding opportunities out there available. And, uh, you may want to contact the Brownfield or the, um, excuse me, Florida, um, Environmental Protection, FDEP, and they can give you the background and what you might need to do.
I think we should pursue, well, at least research and find out what's available before, because really...
David Hilston, Urban Design Manager, again, uh, we have been in contact with the Regional Planning Council regarding that particular program that he spoke of. Uh, so, uh, we can go back and find out what information, what exactly we did find. Tickling in the back of my head is, I, I don't believe we qualified for, uh, certain, uh, aspects of that program, but we'll get you information.
If we donate it to the Wildlife Center, would we?
Same thing would exist.
I think the Wildlife Center has a much larger, uh, pride job to fill out, rather than just being, having one particular spot in a downtown area for a hospital. I think we would want to have a dialogue, some dialogue with them before we would suggest...
Well, I would, I would agree with that as well, but again, I was thinking of that particular property as, again, not being, not having any potential buyers, and that's where I was thinking that perhaps, I didn't realize that we would have to do something anyway.
So, then the last one is, um...
We've got two.
Two.
We've got, uh, we've got, uh, Taylor Road, and we've got the former Public Works Utilities. Taylor Road.
I mean, again, I mean, I look at this, what it's valued at, both of those, and they seem low, so unless we want to do appraisals, then we really have no idea what they're really worth.
What is the Taylor Road? I don't see any value.
I think it was back when we did the, uh, land swap, it was twenty, in the 20,000 range. Something like that.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-some odd.
Which, that's the property appraiser.
That's the property.
So, it's probably worth more than that.
Right, but we really don't know what it's worth.
I'd hang on to that, you know, Taylor Road is going to be a thoroughfare, I mean, why not?
And for annexation purposes, we may need it sometime.
I just hang on to that one.
I would agree.
And Shreve also, I mean, there's lots of interest in that property, lots of interest in that property.
So, is anybody wanting to market those now, pursue this?
Well, I would like to suggest, I'd like to agree with, uh, Ken, that we hold on to the property on, on Taylor for, for now. We don't know what opportunities that may present as we go forward, and I'd like to discuss the former, um, Public Works complex when we get to that.
We're there.
Over there?
We're there.
We're there.
Okay, well, I spoke to, uh, to Terry about possibly, talking about a suggestion that Lindsay Harrington made some time back. I don't know if, Terry, if you have the ability to put that on the screen, and as we consider the possibility of the sales tax being adopted by the voters, the, the suggestion was made by Lindsay some time back with regard to marketing it, that Charlotte Street be extended down to West Henry Street. That may be something that we, that might want to be considered in conjunction with the, the building of a library. It would provide additional access, perhaps additional parking, um, just something that we should, might want to think about.
Yes, the P-1-1, is that the library?
P, Howard, it's P-1, is it?
That's the history park.
Now, P-1-1 is the history park, that's right, directly, P-1 between, uh, Shreve and Virginia, is that correct?
That's the history park. The library is going to be over here, Shreve and Virginia.
We can't see, we can't see what you're pointing at.
Shreve, the corner of Shreve and Virginia.
Yeah, right there. See, that's like where the old Fleet Building used to be.
Sure.
That's where the library.
An extension of that street, Charlotte, down to Henry, might be very appropriate.
Mm-hmm. With some nice on-street parking that's designed.
And who knows, we may get some funding out of the, out of the process as well.
That might be, that is a good idea, Tom.
Where's the Linear Park on here?
It's...
The Linear Park?
Yeah.
Well, that's over by West Virginia.
It's the, it's, what you see there, the di, the diagonal, that Terry just pointed to it, that's the Linear Park area. You see how it turns toward...
Under the green line?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the Linear Park.
I do like that idea, Tom. That's a great idea.
When I, when I read that in the document we were provided, that Lindsay had made that recommendation, I thought that was a really nice idea.
Lindsay? Thank you for that idea.
Thank you, anytime I can do something, I think it really will help us out.